Six o'clock.
United States of America, in your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition. Thank everyone for kicking things off in a good manner, but around the border. For good things so far, so any other recognitions?
I'll just give a shout out to the entire district. Um, Harry said I think that we are off to a good start. Now it's week three, I believe, we started 28 with kids. Uh, but our leadership team, our two building principals, our directors have done a fantastic job, our staff especially, so teachers and support staff really did a great job of loving our case back. We've had a lot of changes this past year, upgrades with our CIS, upgrades with some of our programs within the buildings, and I think that our families and our teachers have been very accommodating and patient as we made some adjustments. So I'm very, been very pleased with our performance.
And I'd like to add, um, recognize Mr. Corrick, he's superintendent, no longer interim superintendent. Um, happy to have him on a re-contract with the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
On to approval minutes. August 19th. For Monday, August 19th. Yeah, I wasn't here. That's why, that's why you remember it. I was not here. Um, I think one thing that, just the attendees, Ray was obviously absent because he's no longer the facilities director.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, yeah, motion, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 8:19. 24.
I'll second that.
Uh, any comments actually? No.
None?
No. All favor of approval minutes? What do you want to speak?
Should be known, we do have one public here tonight.
Yeah.
From the playground, did you get right? Are you on the playground?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, sorry, yes, you're right.
I received an email from, I'm gonna probably say his name incorrectly, from Mike Zlazek, which I sent an email to both John and Tim. They're requesting a shared board meeting between the Warsaw and Port School Board. So they looked for some dates that were available for the faculty so we can set this up. We need to post this legally. Um, so I think once we've found some dates availability for this team, I will share that information with Mike and the Warsaw. So, I think, John, you've set me some dates already, but maybe dates from the entire way.
We'd buy one response with one if they're available, that'd be great to find a date.
I believe, I believe they meet on Tuesdays?
Tuesdays, yeah.
So Tuesdays are probably not.
There's a, there's a standing meeting at the police station every other Tuesday, and then if needed, they can meet in the town hall offices. We're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, the police station is a great venue, so if we can share that, that would be great.
Was it, did you forward that?
I think I consented to you, it's him. Um, I consented.
I can do that. Sure. I guess, and, um, I believe he was invited to come and speak, maybe they are coming to speak here, um, but nobody's on here. Uh, I think it's still kind of a, kind of an open question to make sure that the, the policy is satisfied, at the same time, the, you know, contracts of the rest of the staff are satisfied as well for as far as like staffing availability and timeliness. I know timeliness is an issue on both sides, you know, being able to offer the, the use of the facilities in a timely manner to the public, but also the timing error for staffing to be available and, um, to prepare for such events. So, uh, I think this is still kind of an open item in the whole business.
Or meditating, but it did get put on the agenda tonight.
Well, it's, it's already built, it's a new business with something that's assigned, I think it's something we should take up in the subcommittee, that's what I mentioned in the last meeting, but I think it's a, it's a bigger discussion than D, just, just providing you with, with information, we need to sit down and look at different models, um, and then make recommendations to the board.
Different models of what?
Just how different districts feel.
I thought that the, the thing that you were presenting was that you wanted to change, and I could be wrong, but change the policy that school committee did not have to approve of the school, the use of the building.
That was one part of it, but I think we should look at the fee structure, and I think that it's, it's beneficial for the subcommittee to kind of weigh in and break samples to the table. Um, that way we'll kind of work on this collaboratively.
Okay. I don't think we should change the policy without the voting of the school committee, though.
Well, the policy subcommittee can work through that stuff, and then we can discuss it in an open meeting. This is, there's a lot of, I think we talked about it previously, we left it as, if we're gonna change a policy, we need the subcommittee to review it, work, I think Mr. Nolet was here in the initial discussion about it, because he met with us at one point, and there was get all the invested parties involved, and then you can have meetings whenever without having to have a full open meeting, you know, in a quorum. We just wanted to put that to the policy subcommittee to work through those details.
Okay.
And I had received a correspondence a little while back from, um, Mr. Matt Grant, asking about, uh, building security, and nothing really, um, in particular, just questioning if, I think there was something a while back before that, about building security issues, and I believe we had new cameras installed, we got upgraded system, and I, I would like to think that any gaps have been filled as far as security goes. Um, just to address that, good correspondence. Um, I, again, I don't think there's anything outstanding beyond that. Is there any other correspondence to speak of?
Who?
All right, moving on, student representatives.
I'd like to introduce Dante Jane Grande, who I think was here last June, Dante?
Yes.
Dante's sister Olivia was our correspondent, if you will, for the student body last year, last couple of years, actually.
Yes.
Uh, so Dante's family, their family tradition. Uh, Dante is now in grade eight, and all yours, Dante.
All right. Past information, sixth and seventh grade orientation. We invited the upcoming sixth and seventh graders to an orientation on August 23rd to show them around the high school, teach them how to open their lockers, and teach them about their schedule, as well as answering questions they may have about what school is like in this building. Activities fair. On Friday, September 6th, we held our annual, our annual activities fair, inviting students grades seven to 12 to sign up for clubs and sports, as well as offering opportunity to create clubs they are interested in seeing at the school. First day welcome. On the first day of school, students started their day by heading down to the gym to receive their schedules, and then were sent to their first block class and finished the rest of the day as a whole. Upcoming information. Class elections on September, uh, class elections on September 17th, 18th, and 19th, we will be hosting class elections for the sixth, seventh, and ninth grade, giving students opportunities to hold class office positions. Homecoming. On Saturday, September 28th, we will be hosting our annual homecoming dance. The dance will be from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and we will have pizza, snacks, drinks, and ice cream. Uh, as always, the dance is for nine through 12 only. We will also be hosting our annual homecoming spirit week from the 23rd to the 27th. Social media. We invite all community members to follow our social media accounts to keep up with all NVHS Student Council activities and events. Our accounts are Instagram @NVStuko and Facebook @NVStuko. Student council meetings. All meetings are open to the school, uh, school and community. Meetings are typically every other Monday in the high school kiva. Please feel free to join us if you have anything you would like to discuss, or would just like to see how things are going. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Now that there's, um, a different setup for the sixth and seventh grade, and this is for you, we're actually Mr. Deoria, um, would there be dances for that, Aker?
Uh, there, we are hosting a dance this Friday for the middle school.
Oh, did it say that? Did I miss that?
Uh, no, I love it.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. So this Friday, do they have a dance?
Yes, this Friday.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. What time are your student council meetings?
Student council meetings from 5:30, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are you DJing here?
No.
No, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. On to food pantry and North Brookfield Food Collaborative.
All right, so to give you a little context of what this is, what this is all about. So for the past several years, both schools have had working food pantries and care closets, if you will, that supply students and families who need with food and clothing. Um, they're accessible during the school day, with the help of our school nurses, our principals, our judgment counselors. It's not confidential, uh, not confidentially, so that we, we want to make sure that every student has access to those care closets. They've been supported, if you will, by donations, um, and we've had, you know, some great responses from families over the years. Um, so early this summer, I was approached by a couple of members of the community, Karen Ferry from Ming One, and Mrs. Martin Hanson from another. They told us as leadership team about an endeavor they were doing within, within the community. Uh, it's called the North Brookfield Community Food Collaborative. Similar to what we do here at the schools, they supply, uh, mostly seniors and other members of the community with food assistance if they need it. So we talked about this, and we decided to, to look at how we can join forces to make this a better endeavor for everybody. Um, so obviously I turn it over to Karen and Margaret to explain a little more about history and some of the details.
Hi, I'm here. Happy to be here. So, um, this is pretty exciting. I believe it was July 23rd, a few of us, our paths happened to cross at the same time, and we've all discussed how can we help people with food insecurity, and through the years we have. Um, one of the things that we talked about was the amazing food pantries that are in North Brookfield, St. Joseph's, the congregation church, the high school, um, the elementary school, and what could we do to possibly support that? That we could eliminate the scramble when somebody needs food, because then it's like everybody's on the phone calling, can you get this and get that? That we could have a food hub and just have it packed all the time. So, you know, the congregation church needs cereal, the senior center also has a food pantry. So that's what I thought process was, and we said get donations, and the Episcopal Church temporarily allowed us to put our food there. Well, the food started growing, and we were thinking, you know, what can we do so we're not duplicating each other's efforts? And where can we have the food just in one place? Um, and that's when we came to the school, because the food pantry is already here. Could we put it here, and it would be much easier if one of the families needed food, that they would just, you know, Margaret would continue her cheese, and then she could talk to you in a minute or whatever. So I had gone to the senior center because they needed some food, and they happened to have Kevin's Farm donated fresh produce, and there was an abundance of it. And then she thought, what am I gonna do with this? And I said, well, I'll just go pass it around. Two other farms joined, House Farm, Trudy Farm, so now we had unbelievable crazy crates of vegetables. So we passed it out to, um, the senior center took theirs, we went to the Berada Estates, the Ward Street Apartments, and the Brook Street Apartments, and that was every Tuesday. And as we passed out, we got to meet people in the community, um, some that wanted to help, some that weren't getting help, and we heard, you know, I haven't had meat in four months, my benefits have been cut, so we thought, what else can we do? Farmer Matt donated 40 pounds to Ground Beer Murder that went into everybody's freezers. Then we got freezer donated, so we asked if we could have that up here, because to have all the food morning area and make the ads, um, we wouldn't all be doing the same thing and wasting time. So we could be more organized that way. So then, uh, we were doing that, and then on Wednesday, um, the senior center donated 10 meals up to Berada State, and I started bringing that. And then after the third Wednesday, I thought they were having an abdominal concert. I'm sorry, but it upset me. They were all sitting there waiting for the 10 meals, and they were more than 10 people. So I said, well, we need more meals. Everybody got together, we went to the Pizza Palace, we went to Jim's Pizza, and we went to Connect Restaurant, and we have a total of 80 meals every week that we're gonna be able to pass out. We decided we needed to see what the need was. We sent out a survey to these buildings with amazing response, and, um, everybody's called the surveys, everybody wants the meals on Wednesday, everybody wants the fresh produce, and then we wanted to make sure it was sustainable. We didn't want constantly every week, try to get 10 cans of vegetables or whatever. And we secured two pallets of frozen food from CNS Warehouse in Westview, and last week was the first time that it came, and it filled the freezer, it filled the congregation freezer, the senior center freezer, we went to all the buildings and passed it out. So, um, people are very excited, people are happy that they're being helped, like they're happy that they're being seen, and we, this is slow for us, because we thought, let's just go slow, let's just take it easy, but when you have donations like this that you can give to the community, you're not gonna sit on it, so we had to move a little bit faster, um, than what we wanted to, but it's had such a positive response, and I'm just very excited to be part of it, and it's helping a lot of people, you know, and you hear families that, you know, breadwinner got injured, the seniors, their benefits have been cut, and, um, yeah, I was driving down the street, and somebody flagged me down in their car, and gave me a bag of carrots, peaches, and said, you know, give these to the families who need it. So, you know, people are starting to hear about it, and everything has just been super positive, and this is a great community, and there are people in it that need help, and so I think, you know, the community is helping, and it's much appreciated. And Margaret can talk about what she's been doing since 100 years, um, and how this is helping with the program.
Just to clarify completely, so that the frozen food donation is weekly? Yeah, we will be getting this every week, but you didn't talk about the non-perishable foods that we're going to be getting.
Okay, so, um, we're getting a pallet to two pallets of non-perishable foods once or twice a month, and it's 100 boxes of food on that. Um, I do blurt every once in a while about progress on citizens or North Brookfield happening, and somebody said, call provision ministry, they helped, and I called them, and they were down a driver. So I said, all right, well, I'll wait to hear from you, and I called a couple weeks later, and he happened to get his driver, but didn't want to come here. So he's gonna deliver to where he normally does a chicken feed, an extra two pallets. So that's 200 boxes of it. So everything we're doing is sustainable, and we can grow on that. I mean, we do realize that, you know, we're getting the market of a family that has a school-aged child, or a senior citizen that happens to be in housing, and we are very aware that there is a population that we haven't got to yet, but we promise we will. Any questions?
Well, I'll give you my little talk. So, um, our food pantry in the high school actually was started several years ago by our school nurse, Maureen Floyd, which she got a donation in memory of her father. So she kind of ran under the radar, she was very, you know, discreet about helping anyone that needed it, and I came into the picture when COVID hit, and I started helping her because we're doing a lot more deliveries to homes when the kids aren't in school. So I found that it was something that I really was passionate about, making sure that our families in school have food to eat if they need it, and, um, the families would reach up to Maureen, and we would work out whatever they needed. So when this came about, and we were talking about reaching more people, um, I thought the school connection with this project is the community service from our juniors and seniors. So, um, we're hoping that by October, we will be making the connection, after we've heard from all the surveys and what everyone's needs are, that our juniors and seniors will volunteer, and we will make the deliveries up to 271, um, to the senior citizens. And as we've been calling and answering their surveys, we've been telling them about this, and they are so excited to know that students are gonna come up, and even if they're just dropping off the foods, they hi to them, they're gonna see new people, they're gonna see our kids from school. Um, my daughter, Megan Hanson, who's the math teacher, she's been taking names of students who are interested in the program, and, um, I've been talking to them about it, and they're very excited to, um, just be part of this. So I'm excited that, you know, the town is gonna see our kids working and caring about our senior citizens, and with all of the work that Karen's been doing, securing donations, um, I think it's something that's gonna be lasting. So, um, food insecurity in North Brookfield, we wanna make sure that people know we're here, and I know that, um, we developed a survey that's gonna go out, that, um, anyone that gets your emails, and then maybe we can, once we have this running, you know, well, and we can open it up as we hear about people, you know, we're not gonna say, no, we're not doing your population yet, we're, we're taking everybody as we hear about them. So, um, it's, it's very exciting, we're very happy to have actually the food hub this right next door here, and, um, we're looking forward to like our first donation of the non-perishables, this should be coming soon, so if you have any questions, you know, feel free, um, you can reach me definitely by email at the school, or, um, we'll be getting that information.
She doesn't ever put her ring on.
I understand. So, yeah, emails, that's true.
All right, you did attach the survey in your packet, so there's a QR code, there's also a link there, which brings you right to a Google form that you can fill out, takes you two minutes, tops. Um, but it, again, just expites the whole process, you know, the state has done a really good job of making sure breakfast and lunch is free, you know, for two years in a row now, but as we just started, as we know, we still have obstacles with food security. So we're trying to join forces, if you will, to make this program better, more robust, um, and we have a lot of need, and we wanna make sure that people are feeling comfortable asking that we make this as easy to access as possible. So this will be going out in an email from me, but there'll also be links to our webpage, and Karen and Margaret will send it as they see fit.
With these, uh, you know, large donations and pallets of food, is storage becoming an issue, or do you have a lot of places to keep everything?
Not, not yet.
Not yet.
Especially with the, like, frozen items, that can be a big deal, so.
Um, but I think the, the, um, it's, we take it in on a Thursday, and the majority of it goes out right away, so.
We're also collaborating, collaborating with Southbridge, their food pantry. Um, so we've, we've learned a lot from them, and, um, so we kind of split the last delivery so that. Because they, they have a refrigerated den, so at times when we are gonna need it for meals, or, you know, weather, whatever, they said that we could use it, you know, I did meet them a delicious late breakfast to kind of pick their brain on how they were doing what they were doing. So, I mean, donations are actually helping through communities.
I wanna thank you so much for all your hard work and for coming, so that hopefully we'll be able to hear about it.
Yes.
That's amazing, that's really fantastic.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for introducing this program. I hope everyone gets this, uh, this survey, fills it out, and, um, I'm sure everyone's, uh, I'm sure everyone who applies will see some help, this is a fantastic program.
It's nicely getting fresh stuff, too.
Yeah.
That's really nice.
So, a little bit of farm community?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody we ask, they just, yes, yes, yes. They, you know, and I know, you know, you've played us a hard work, but it's been so easy. You know, people just, people know what other people are doing, they just wanna help, so it's been, it's really been wonderful.
Are you gonna, have one of those flyers brought to the grocery store, you think? They could put it on the bulletin board.
We have several thoughts, um, once we get this situated, and it's running very smoothly, and we have a nice footprint, grocery stores, the library, churches, the laundromat, wherever we can host it all.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, school committee reports. If there's anything new. Financial reports.
All right, so I have attached one through your port, um, just sharing our copy of the signing forms for your review.
There was one here on a mark that I just signed, that I would just see if I could get some clarification on. It says on the back here, you know, deposit of check number 1403, NC never received cash FY '23, and for the amount of $2,200.
That's student activities?
That was just the last room.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, sorry. It just stuck out to me that kind of one. What was the last one in case you needed, I wonder?
I guess you don't have anything to do with student activities, like your classification.
I believe it was from NGA's classroom, it was a remaining.
Oh, NC.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
So it was either transportation or whatever.
Yeah, so student activities close to each school. But we have another one signed, we got a flyer from another board. But yeah, I'm here making a question.
Any other questions or comments on the financial reports? Super units report.
Okay, so this will be just two parts tonight, just some brief updates and then a pre-presentation. Any questions regarding the goals for the 2025 school year? So as I have been doing since a prior request, I believe last March or so, just some hires for our district and some departures. I would like to add unfortunately that Mr. Yato, after his presentation today, he has decided to move back down south. So we are reposting our our supervisor position. Actually, it hasn't been posted, it hasn't today. So that is a new.
Which position was that?
The supervisor.
Oh, okay.
So that was, that happened today, over the last year or so hours. But I wanted to let you guys know that that is, has been posted.
And who do you, what do you have for SLPs right now?
We have Ms. Murphy, who withdrawed, she started day one with us. She is three days a week.
And the SLPA, lots of meetings.
That's the part, so we're in the process of working with local collaborators. We feel, and you can reference them on, I think that within the next month, we'll have an SLPA on board as a principal.
Yes, absolutely, and working on that.
I did French River, actually, that's where we worked on it.
Yep, working with, and then Caps as well. We have a fielder out for a couple of topics actively pursuing that.
Okay, so just a few quick updates. So I know, I did not mention this in the August report, because it wasn't finalized yet, but we did receive an official $15,000 Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant from the state. This is the kind of grant that we apply for in this to support our efforts in bringing advanced manufacturing IP to North Brookfield. So what this will allow us to do is to, for example, join the PD Ed Hub, which is an educational hub in White'sville that is mostly catered around manufacturing and STEM. And it gives our students an effective access to this professional development and internship opportunities for our kids. Additionally, it'll add some money for transportation and allow office and support invited grant, which is the first part to do in October. So it's a lot of work for the district, but this is the next step in that process. So this money will go a long way towards our staff and our students to get them ready for this pathway. As we mentioned back last June and I believe last month as well, our cat lab roll out, we had meetings this past week with two of our second grade teachers. They're going to start the process out this year. Our year one is their qualitative pilot year. So we're starting with the elementary school in October and then we're facing a middle school and a high school later in the school year. So our two second grade teachers have, have, will start us off and they will start working with some little artists and talent to kind of infuse and start our cat lab supplemental curriculum, if you will, for our students. So we're very excited about that. I know last week we also had a meeting with, I believe, our high school or middle school art teacher. So he will be working with cat lab as well in the near future. We also, as I mentioned, we are a part of the NOVAC education for the next two years versus professional development around universal design for learning for our entire teaching and support staff. Our leadership team started doing some PD with them last week. We have a cohort group that is working around coaching video. So as our teachers are receiving PD, we will continue capacity with our principals and our director, special education, making sure that when we are rolling out the PD and when NOVAC is coming in and working with our teachers, that we can support these coaching conversations with our teachers, that when principals go into the classroom, they know what to be looking for and they know how to model this work for our teachers. So this is going on prior to the PD, which will start this summer. Then it'll continue for the rest of the year and into next school year. So like I said, we had our first session last week. We have, we have homework that's due monthly to kind of keep us honest about what we're doing and just kind of sharing with the cohort. If there are leaders from across the country who are involved with us, sharing what we're doing here in North Brookfield as they share with us in turn. So I'll keep you guys updated as we go through this process. Any questions? So the next part of my report are my superintendent goals. Very similar structure that I've used the last couple of years. I have five goals that I shared with you. It's a lot of, a lot of words here, so I'm not going to read them, but I'll just kind of give you overviews of each of the goals. I like to break it down with a goal stated first, with the key actions and the benchmarks. I feel, and I've always felt this way, that you can write a great goal, but if they're not action steps to get there, it's not worth it much. So we try to make, I try to make the action steps, the key actions as detailed as possible. But the first goal is around continuous improvement for the district. And that means making sure that our teachers are coming up with real, tangible goals, that our principals and directors are observing and evaluating them, and that we're hitting our benchmarks as far as the timelines with our evaluation system. Additionally, last year, we, the committee approved our strategic plan, which took a couple of months to put together. That strategic plan will now turn into school improvement plan for both buildings, which will be set in later this fall. So everything kind of starts with the overarching strategic plan. It shrinks down to the school improvement plans. Our building leaders have their own goals that are aligned with the strategic plan and our teachers have goals that are also aligned to those goals. So it's, it's uniform all the way down. And, you know, part of this is making sure that our building administration is in classrooms, giving timely feedback and then giving valuable, you know, outcomes and also observation and evaluation to the time to fashion. Goal number two is professional practice for me. I am starting in year three of the new superintendent induction program, or NSIP. This cohort meets anywhere between eight and 12 years, 12 times a year, both in person and virtually. I have a coach. I've managed two coaches, one retired and I got a new one. But that coach works with me as a signing board for ideas, has worked with me around our strategic planning ideas, has worked with me during different initiatives that we try to start in the district. So this is just building capacity for me. And additionally, as I mentioned last year, I'm also part of a cohort called LEED Now. This is a national cohort. I was able to attend on their dime a conference out in Columbus, Ohio in July. I'll be attending one in Washington DC this coming summer. Again, this is a group of superintendents from across the country who basically bring their problems of practice to the group and the group works with them to come up with solutions. So it's beneficial for all of us to kind of talk about what obstacles we're facing and how we have to overcome those obstacles. So that's professional growth for me.
Is, is there, is it a conference where there are like presentations and whatnot or just?
Yes, yeah, so the one in Columbus was four days. We have presenters, we had breakout sessions. It was great, it was really good. And I think this group, LEED Now, has only been existence for about three years. So every year, they're getting bigger and better, but not getting too big. So it's making sure that the message is just right. Goal number three, just, it goes back to what I was talking about with universal design for learning, but also making sure that our curriculum lines from K through 12, both horizontally, being across grade level and vertical from grade to grade as students transition from grades three to four to five to six and so on. We started this work two years ago. Our goal is to hit as close to a 75% completion rate as possible, which means our teachers know exactly what they're teaching and why, what's the exam standard came, what's the school consequence, meaning they start with this in September and they finish with this in June. And what assessment, how are we measuring efficiency for our students? So that coupled with our PD around UDL is something that I think will really increase our instruction, make it more rigorous and make it more student-centered for our students now and beyond. Goal four, again, is around the next step of this innovation pathway here, which I just spoke about. Like I mentioned, part A is due in October. And this is, what this grant asks of us is that we put together a advisory board, that we work with math higher, that we work with local advanced manufacturing businesses, for example Plexcon. We have a work-based learning program, which we had, we started last spring. We need to continue to work on these details and make sure that this pathway has both course offerings that we have in our home studies, but also internships and work-based learning opportunities for our kids during their junior and senior year of high school. So, you know, we're excited about what we've done so far, but we still have some work to do. This additional grant funding will help with that. Give us, like I said, more opportunities for transportation for kids to see some new venues and to experience this, whether they decide to go into this field or not. It's great to show them what opportunities are for them outside of high school and give them that leg up, whether they choose college or career. And then goal five, this is something that I obviously did as a principal. I've done it formally, but I wanted to make this more formalized for the district and for me and for our students. Is to come up with a student advisory board, which will operate similar to a school council, but we meet monthly or bi-monthly with students. And I think, I haven't really kind of landed on the grade span yet, but I'd like to include as many students as possible. Maybe two staff groups, maybe it's the elementary and upper elementary and then junior, senior, high school. But one thing that I really stress and we stress as a leadership team is student boards, right? We want to make sure that we include our students in our decision-making. This is, these are their schools and we want to give them a platform to share their ideas, their opinions in an organized fashion, right? And we want to be able to share their ideas with all of you, but also both schools, our families, and really, you know, let our students know, and outside of just student council, for example, all our students, that they have a voice, what they want in their schools matters. And this will be another platform for them to do that. I know that Mrs. Yori had a very active school council last year where there's some student membership on that council. I know Mr. Murphy's going to be starting one this year. But this will be one that works solely with the superintendent and I will share that information with not only the committee, but obviously the leadership team and our district families. So those are the, kind of the quick versions of the goals. Again, I did not read all of the action steps and the benchmarks, but I will drop any questions.
On the, the one regarding the vertical alignment of the curriculum, is there, because the goal is 75%, is that a quantifiable thing?
It is.
There's some sort of informational chart or, you know, where we are or where.
Yeah, so we developed a template two years ago and all teachers using the same template to record their curriculum. So that makes sense, what consequence, assessments, it's kind of, it's regular as a learning objective for students. So there's a common place to store this information. And then through our LTA and through our building administrators, we're looking at, you know, what time during the school, whether it's common planning time, whether it's staffing, curriculum hours, that we can only do that in the school, so just high school or just elementary. But when can we do it vertical? So we can bring over our fifth grade teachers and working as sixth grade teachers and make sure that that transition is as seamless as possible. That part, we're still working on the timepiece, but we have a system already in place that we collect all the information.
Where does the 75% come from? Like, why that number?
Working towards 100%. This is year three and I think that if we, in my opinion, if we go too low, it just gives it more time to sit. I want, I want this to be included for a lot of reasons and I think we'll put a real number on that. Our goal last year was 50%. We didn't quite reach that, so we're trying to build up that.
Any other questions? Can we get your, can we get your coach to come in here to tell us whether you did all your assignments?
If you want. She came last year to our connect, she was in the audience. She gave you feedback on that. So she's very pleasant. She'll be, what we're doing this year in year three is that the group that she coaches will be meeting at different school districts. So they're coming to North Brookfield, North Brookfield. So we'll be in here.
Do I have the option to accept the superintendent's 24, 25 goals?
So vote.
Send it. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of accepting these goals as stated? Administrator reports?
All right, I'll go first. I'm excited to let you know that our middle school band is now up to 18 students and that's students in grades six and seven. Mr. Bills has an instrument for every student and they have been practicing each day. We're really looking forward to their holiday concert that's going to be in December. As you know, our sixth grade students will be attending Nature's Classroom from September 30th through October 3rd. Mr. P has been holding parent and student meetings to keep families updated on the trip. Our students and chaperones are really looking forward to a great time. I've heard it's really wonderful. There, Mr. Murphy actually threw me in on that. This week, we're going to start using our Second Steps program in grades six through 12 to address the social emotional needs of our students. Second Steps helps build social emotional skills like nurturing positive relationships, managing emotions and meeting goals so they can thrive in school and more importantly, life after school. I'm excited to say that we're planning our college visits for our senior class the first week of October. Our school counselor, Ms. Earhart, is planning in-person visits to WPI, Assumption College. And I did have to make a change here, so we have three schools locked up that we'll be going to. It's going to be WPI, Assumption and Annemaria College. Assumption is going to give us a free lunch, so we get to see the cafeteria and the seniors were excited about that when I told them today. After the success of last year's Wellness Day, we are now hoping to have two of these events this year. Last year, students enjoyed activities of Wellness Day from time spent with therapy dogs to taking a group hike along the nature path to learning a new hobby from a teacher. Wellness Day is dedicated to students' mental, social and emotional and physical wellbeing and is a great way to build positive relationships between students and our staff. Our first Wellness Day will be held on November 13th with a second event planned for sometime in March. On October 15th, our high school students will be at Nichols College to take part in the Black and Red, the Dilemma of African-American Indigenous Identity in Massachusetts. This initiative aligning with Massachusetts Humanities Mission to highlight marginalized perspectives and our district goals around diversity, equity and inclusion, delves into the historical and contemporary experiences of African Native Americans. The field trip will involve a film screening, a panel discussion with the documentary producers, an art exhibit with a local indigenous artist and a performance by the Eastern Medicine Singers. Transportation and lunch will be provided by Nichols College, it's all paid for. I would like to invite our school committee members to our first interdisciplinary class tomorrow with Ms. McPherson and Ms. Kemp. They began collaborating over the summer when they found out they were to be teaching similar courses. Ms. Kemp's class has been learning about the justice system and the steps people involved in crime scene investigations. They will be working as a class to conduct a mock crime. They will be working as a class to conduct a mock crime scene investigation, where each student plays a different role in the process. They'll be working with Ms. McPherson's students, who began by discussing the way true crime stories are told through television, documentary, podcasts, and other types of writing. They're currently reading Sarah Miller's The Board Murders and using forensics reporting to map out the details of one of America's most well-known cold cases. They'll go observe the crime scene investigation carried out by Ms. Kemp's students from behind the police tape and report their initial findings as press agents publishing news articles about the scene. Ms. Kemp's students will hold a press conference where they will share their findings, and Ms. McPherson's students will ask any questions they may have. Finally, the forensic class will have a mock trial, where the students will present their case to the true crime. True crime students will sit in, listen, and then interview at the end. And I already know who the murder person is, but I can't share that with you. Oh, you can try to figure it out if you come tomorrow. And finally, I'm really excited to give an update about one of our alumni, Olivia Giangrande, who used to come last year and sit where Dante is. I was at a field hockey game last week, and I ran into Dante's parents, and they were telling me that Olivia, who was a freshman in college studying forensics at Cedar Crest College in Allentown, Pennsylvania, was identified and selected as a freshman to be part of her research project with her professors. Why this is such a huge deal is this is normally given in juniors and seniors, but Olivia, as a freshman, was selected because of her high school transcripts and the experiences she had right here at North Brookfield High School. So really proud of Olivia and really proud of our school and staff that these are the kind of students we produce out of our school. That's all I have.
Congratulations, Dr. [unintelligible]. What time is it?
The class tomorrow is going to be 10 o'clock, which is our deep block. So, and we're going to be right over here, actually. The murder victim is already in here all set. So the door is locked, it's in our middle school STEM room.
Okay, thank you.
But this is, I'm sorry, this is a great opportunity for interdisciplinary, and the superintendent has brought this up, is he wants to see more of this, but cross-curricular stuff, so now you have reading, writing, we're doing a podcast. This is really cool stuff that, you know, this is the kind of stuff that Olivia didn't choose to do, so I hope you get to come.
I think I'm going to try. I had another conference, I think I'm going to try to do that one. Thank you.
Yes, so.
Well, I have another question.
Oh, go ahead.
Ask if there are any more questions. What about touring the Big Path next month?
They'll be here tomorrow, actually, to do a presentation to our kids, and then they're working with Ms. Earhart to set up those tours for following.
Thank you. All right, sorry, Art.
You're good.
Do you want to have Art to go next?
I actually have a question about the library here at the school. I heard that you don't have a librarian right now. I thought the librarian, you shared the librarian between the elementary school and high school. Is that a longer shared position?
Yeah, so she's spending her time at the elementary school right now. Mr. Murphy and I do work together, so we're trying to arrange time for her to come out to set up the media center for our students to use. One of our, one of the things we do during our flex block is giving our students time to read, so every Friday they have a reading day, and so Mr. Murphy and I are working with, you know, having her come out to set up the library so students can come in, check out a book, a magazine, a graphic novel, anything that'll encourage our students to read. So we are working on trying to find creative ways to get her over here to work with us as well.
How did that change?
I'm sorry.
How did that change?
Well, when we brought the sixth grade up, and I don't know if the superintendent wants to speak more on this, but we had a merge, and so some of the specials or the electives that we have here, we had, we took more of those teachers over here to work longer hours, I guess, in our school, and Mr. Murphy needed some extra help in the media center at the elementary school, so sort of shifted like that.
So, yeah, just to add on that, she was, the media specialist only over here for, I think, a total of maybe two and a half hours a week last year. It wasn't a lot of time.
Two days a week, yeah.
What this has allowed us to do right now is it's given the elementary school more access to common planning time. Mr. Murphy has worked the schedule where students will be going to media, to the library as a special, that allows teachers to work within their discipline at a grade level on common planning time. So it's been helpful, it will be helpful. As Mr. Dario mentioned, we like to have a full-time librarian in both schools. This was a position that we cut back a couple of years ago because of budget constraints. We phased it back in for, for any reason, if you'd like, I'd see the phase back up and move forward.
Any other questions? Mr. Murphy?
Sure. So I discussed our opening. Our opening went very well. PTO provided a huge breakfast for all of our staff, that was great. Time to break bread with everyone, have a chance to put base with the names, mostly for me and our new staff. This was a commemorative commemoration. We spoke about our mission and our vision, direction of our schools, and celebrated staff years of service, and also introduced our new staff. Broke up by schools for trainings. We started with Alma, which is our new student information system. Teachers learned how to use, obviously, the attendance, the grading, communication features, and that was led by Justin Hackenson, our technology director. I then met with staff who designed our TBIS role for the year. Then we took the rest of the afternoon to work on the day in the life, me being new to the building, and staff with some ideas about how they wanted to design the day. So we let all of the grade levels break out and then we walked through the day of a student, and so then we could look at where's the best transition plans, what bathrooms do we use for our older grades, literally just walk through a day, and they had a lot of insight for what that would look like, arrival, dismissal, breakfast, everything, lunch. So it was a very helpful activity for all of us to go through and make sure our students stay, would be ready for them on day one. Day two was all about our inter-reading program. We had an outside presenter come in, laid out the program for our staff. This was an important time for the staff to have an expert answering questions and showing the ins and outs of the website. We also identified four staff members to receive licenses to the Coachly program. So the Coachly program is a license literally to an expert in the field, someone aligned with inter-reading. So they can reach out to this person through chat, they can set up Zooms with them, they can just email whatever they want, it's 24/7 coaching for the whole year. So we identified four different grade levels to have this person, kind of help them through the process in year one of inter-reading, and other teachers can reach out to them with questions, with whatever they want to reach out to that person. So it's going to be a great way to roll out the program and really have an expert in the field for it with us. So Barrett said about that, and it's already been very helpful for us. Next thing I want to talk about was PBIS. So obviously, if you've been over at the schools, and when we did our tour, we saw a lot of our matrices posted throughout our school. In our hallway, we have our five major ones posted, our cafeteria, hallway, recess, bathrooms, all break into the main hallway. And then in the cafeteria, we have our appropriate voice level stoplight, so our grades all get rated on their level of voice. Trying to really make it a inclusive place. We have students who don't like loud places, we have students who struggle, you know, trying to focus the E when there's a lot going around. So we're really doing a good job of making sure our expectations are being followed in there, so much so, we had our first disco lunch of the year on Friday, where each of our grades earned the right to have the disco ball on, some music being played. It was a lot of fun, it was my first disco lunch, but it was something that's been going on as a tradition at the school, but we made sure it was done in a very safe way and, you know, focused on eating first and then have some fun with the students after. So each time, we'll get a little bit better at it and extend the music time and the stand-up to dance around a little bit time, and go from there. But everywhere in our building, we have our matrices up, so our staff has been teaching these visuals throughout the school day, help the students understand the expectations. Teachers are beginning to use our Starbucks, so I actually walk around with them all day long, I have them here, and I hand them out also. Mr. Diorio was gracious enough to have me come over and speak to our juniors and seniors. And later this week, we're going to have a couple, I think we have five now, identified juniors and seniors, that are going to run our school Starbucks store for us. So they're going to come over at 2:00. Each grade will have a day designated from 2:00 to 2:30, where teachers can bring their class down to use the school store. We have little trinkets, we have experiential things like, I'll roll you to your special in a wheelie chair. So I actually, you know, I'll be your chauffeur for the day, and that's like 30 Starbucks. We have a comfy chair on the calf, we have a Bluetooth speaker you can bring to the calf. We're really trying to give our students some experiences in the school day that will make them feel extra special for all the hard work they do, not just, you know, a pencil top that looks cool. So we're really trying to make that vibe in the school something positive and something that kids are excited about because they work hard in the classroom, and we want to celebrate that. Next up, our dibbles. So Clementine Naftamara, our reading specialist, is actually finished now, I wrote this report a few days ago, all of our dibbles assessments for grades one through five, and she sent home this lovely letter in here, I'm not going to read it for data, but this is going home with every student of that, with their dibble scores. So we're very excited about having our first benchmark of the year done, and a dibble is a reading assessment, so it will give us, again, the start of the year to understand where students are and what we need to do to get them where we need to be. So that's our dibbles assessment. And last but not least, our PTO. So not only did the PTO provide our staff with breakfast, they also provided our pre-K kindergarten students with brand-new T-shirts as a welcome into MDES. This organization does amazing work with both schools, they had their first meeting of the year on September 11th. We clearly laid out the multiple events that they have planned throughout the school year, and the big one is actually in two nights, so our cake walk, which I'm very nervous about because I'm making a cake with my daughter tomorrow night, it's a koala thing, it's, you know, piping, I'm very nervous, but we'll just see how it comes out. And that's at our back-to-school night, so that's September 18th, 6 to 8. So we'll be doing a scavenger hunt, kids will be all over the building, our teachers will be in their classroom from 6 to 7, and then they go out and mingle. Obviously, the cake walk, we'll have tables set up, our food collaborative will be there, collecting non-perishable items, that was in my smore this week, right in front of our food pantry over there, which works in step with high schools, so Barrett said about that, and I think the building's going to be filled with energy and smiles, so it's going to be a great night.
Did I hear the book fair starts this week as well?
Yes, yeah, the book fair, actually, today was opening day of the book fair, so that will be open all week. Our kindergarten classes were the first one to visit the book fair this afternoon. That got set up in the Bell area in the back of our school, so Barrett's excited about
All right, well, I do not have murder mystery or just a little twelve-month-old cake walks, but I'll share my update. So during the part of professional development days on August 26th and 27th, I worked closely with both Art and John in terms of working together and being able to pull together for the service, Student Services Department, professional development, to be able to pull together not only the teachers who are related service staff, but also the APA paras as well as paraprofessionals. So we met to learn about the department's focus for the year, which includes the new IP data system ed plan, the new IP instructional strategies, data collection, as well as transition. I was especially excited to have our paraprofessionals and APA paraprofessionals participate in workshop session during both of each of those professional development days, which was really very exciting. And I appreciated their enthusiasm and feedback regarding future training interest for the upcoming meeting times that have been added in this school year. So they were really an active group, they were very engaged, and I really feel like they found that paraprofessional time meaningful, and I look really forward to the rest of the school year to be working with them closely. Our SA grant for this year was completed and submitted, and the next phase and implementation of our new IP system ed plan, as we talked about in my update last time in August, it is now going to be forward with the transfer of data, it's a large amount of data that's taking place prior to our upcoming training that is planned in October. As I mentioned, last month, we have a core team that is working very hard, and right now, this current phase is quite complex, and I would like to specifically recognize the IT director, Mr. Hackenson, his assistants, as well as Mrs. Remmich, who are extensive work, and emphasize extensive work on the stage of this process, which is critical for successful system implementation and effective training sessions that again are coming up in just a matter of a few weeks. It's quite, quite an undertaking, and I'm very grateful for all of their hard work. Our Indicator 7 early childhood outcome data has been reviewed by DESI and has been accepted for final submission, so I'm pleased about that. And then finally, we are nearing the completion of our submission for Indicator 14, which is our transition survey outcomes, and that's for our students with disabilities who have graduated in school year 22, 23. The Department of Special Education, or DESI, collects this data from across all public school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as just one indicator of our educational efforts at both the state and the local level. So we will be expected to complete that shortly within the next week or so.
Thank you. I would like to point out that Dante's face lit up each time disco lunch was taken.
Those were very fun, and I'm glad to hear that.
It sounded very fun, I agree with you, Dante.
Maybe Mr. Dioro, maybe you need to see if you can get that.
I'm going to have to go.
That was crazy.
All right, technology update from Mr. Hackenson. All iPads have been updated to the latest iOS, most Chromebooks have been updated. School brains to Alma has been phased in, now it uses our new SIS for book carding, supporting data for final steps. Integration for Panorama with school brains at Alma completed, what is Panorama?
There is a survey platform that just helps us capture more data. We're setting up our first survey probably a week. It's a closed-in-confronted survey, it's all students, staff, and families. So it's another data point for us to use to help with goal setting, everything that's
Snap software integration mostly complete, it's a minor of us iron out. ED Plan Project in full swing, hopefully, despite the October to phase out the school New students and staff onboarded. Chromebooks distributed to new returning students and continuous updates on the district Anything else to add on to software?
I don't think so. I think, I don't know if families have access online yet, but it's, you know, we're still, like I said, we're just finishing up the data, move over, change over, if you will, but it's much easier to navigate, it's much easier, more user-friendly, and it does work. So we can pull quicker, better reports, both at the building level, district level, so we're very pleased with what we're seeing so far.
Regionalization update's the same as it was. Dead to water. No one's, no communication declaring whether it's moving forward or it's stopping, so at this point, we're proceeding with our school doing what we need to do, give as much to the students as possible. Any other old business? Policy, Title IX update.
So I put a few items in your package. So I put a few items in your packet, and again, this is a fairly word-heavy document, but the federal government updated or revised Title IX laws, which have to be adopted by every public school in the nation. We did some training over the summer, kind of gave us acumen of what that means. There's about 15 different bullets I put on this paper, but it really makes Title IX a little more robust, and it really kind of breaks out, specific staff members have to have key roles in this process. So just for those who are watching, Title IX is really protection against any sex-based harassment, which now covers sexual violence, sexual stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy, sexual orientation, gender identity. So, you know, we're really trying to, not we, the entire country is looking at making sure that there are policies in place at all places like a school, where everybody's protected against this kind of behavior. So what we're going to be doing is, one of the things that the NSIP cohort is going to be working on within smaller groups, is looking at what other districts should do. You know, this is that kind of, that famous line of "Don't dream at the wheel, talk to colleagues, see what they're doing as far as the language, and then make it fit your particular district." But, you know, this, this needs to be done, and we'll be working on this throughout the fall. This will be something that I think, again, referring to the policy stuff committee, with some drafts to look at, and obviously your feedback is part, is a big part of this, but making sure that this is the language that we can adopt and we can enact as policy as quickly as possible.
How do people get assigned to these roles that they have here?
They'll, they'll have, because of the size of our district, they'll have to be within our leadership team structure, so the principals, Schofield, Ms. Emery, myself, I think it's four or five different roles. So where the old policy would allow one person to kind of be in charge of all of that, there'll be separate roles that people have to take on as part of the process.
A little more accountability involved?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's making sure that every, every group is protected, essentially. And there's more specific timelines around what needs to be poured and shared information. Obviously, it's an AP process for people who are part of this, this process as well.
Is the, is the goal for this to add these updates as an addendum to the current policies that we have, the current policy handbook, or is it to, I'm just thinking, as far as the policy committee and these, these roles here are concerned, do they need to go through in depth and make sure that each of these updates is incorporated into every single place that's mentioned, or?
So we'll have to update this, for example, in our student handbook, which has those roles spelled out, who are in those roles. But it's twofold, I think we have to look at the policy itself, which the language is appropriate, if it's revised, reflects 2024 standards, and then the procedures that go along with it. We'll need to have an addendum or a separate document that outlines the exact procedure we can follow in the occurrence of the Title IX investigation. So it's two parts, and the procedure piece is typically not in the policy handbook, it's in, it's in the student family handbook, so people can see how the procedure works. But that's something that's part of this that we'll be trying to, again, adopt as well.
Any other questions about the Title IX update?
No questions.
All right. New business, it's been kind of hanging out there because of?
So before you start, I'd really like to, one thing I did not have a chance to add to the pack because it just happened in the last couple of days, just formalized. So we have, we have two donations to the district. We've won an anonymous donation for $100 for a senior's classroom, and then we have a donation that's pending for $10,000 from the Rural Justice Network to North Brooklyn Public Schools. And this is a letter from Cementa Lee, who's the treasurer of the Rural Justice, Rural Justice Network, excuse me.
Just for those of you at home, it reads, "This letter is to formally offer a $10,000 donation to the Rural Justice Network to North Brooklyn Public Schools. We're so delighted to be able to get back to town, these people have been so much through us here, and I'm excited to see the great work that we know North Brooklyn Public Schools is doing. Please let us know where to send the check. Best regards, Cementa Lee, treasurer, Rural Justice Network." Any other ones for a senior's classroom?
Yes, or an anonymous, Mr. Murphy, it was an $1,100?
Correct.
And $10,000 donation is indicated by this letter, are there any stipulations where it needs to be applied?
No, I mean, this, this will go back to student supplies or even like student scholarships, if they need funding for a senior's classroom, they could for that. This would not be to offset salaries, this would be for the right practice, in the most direct fashion possible, who, you know, would be set up, I believe, through a revolving account, that would, that would keep that money just out of the debt.
And then do we notify how it's being used?
I can do that.
We have to, have a motion to accept these donations as presented? So?
A second.
All in favor? Thank you very much to this anonymous donor here, donor, and thank you to Rural Justice Network. Moving on, any other new business, or sorry, any other issues?
I believe, no, that's it, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I think I've done what I need to tell you.
New business, outstanding, is need some community assignments, and I can put out some pretty interesting words to do then, and as it stands, I know there's some interesting, maybe for other committees, but now that what we have, I can cover what we have to deal with, and this is what I came up with for assignments, and if you want to change or whatever, let me know. Right now I have Policy, Tanya and myself, curriculum, I have Nancy and Canada, for building grounds, Dan and myself, and negotiation, Tim and Tanya, who did a great job this last time around. Any comments or want to get switched over, let me know. Any objections?
I just want to put out there that in case I have babysitter issues, I don't know that I can be on two subcommittees in the school committee, so we can just play it by ear, I'm happy to do that.
Sure, I mean, I, with Policy, I can talk to, you know, Title IX adoption, so anyone else interested in Policy?
Oh, yeah.
All right. We'll leave you at that time.
Okay.
Can I ask, do we want to set base for maybe, or just leave them as is for now, and probably as needed?
I think as needed is probably easiest given, you know, curriculum, I don't think there's ever a meeting on curriculum this past year, so I mean, it's kind of just there if needed, so.
Policy, I think, has a timeline, and we had spoken about in regards to the bullying that we had talked about, when we had a special meeting, April, maybe?
Yeah, it's been a while.
So there was some talk about updating that whole policy, whole new policy?
Policy has a deadline for some of the paraprofessional contract language as well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a subcommittee with, yes, so we had by January 30th to identify the language on the chapter.
So is that, that was going to be negotiated?
No, I, so that was, we would.
No, we negotiated that as a policy committee.
Did a good job with that, Tim.
I think there's a deadline to the Title IX policy, which is as well, that came out in August, so I think very little to see what that is.
Yeah, it does, it's indicated in the board, it needs to be incorporated for this school year.
Sort of a matter, so what I, what I can do is, is I'll, like I said, I'll start to put together some draft versions, I can send to the committee. I believe that we need to post subcommittee meetings. I can double-check them out.
Is that in this book here?
It might be, it might be, but I, I think they are, probably not televised traditionally, but it's not the whole committee, the whole group, it's just the subcommittee and myself.
So as it stands, Policy is really the only one that has timeline?
Policy in negotiation, I'm assuming that within the next month or so, we'll see the letter from the teachers union, plus the, maybe about their pre-negotiation, so. I think we want to start, I assume, a little later, just maybe.
So, motion to accept committee assignments?
Make a motion to accept the subcommittee assignments?
Second. Any other comments or concerns?
No comments.
All paper on the subcommittee assignments? Thank you very much. Do we have an executive session? All right, and move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.